Can I call our meeting to order at 3:00 on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024? And Commissioner Nichols, will you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of minutes from September 10th, 2024?
So moved.
Chair, can we do the roll call vote or the roll call first?
Yes, now.
Okay, let's do the roll call. Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Chair Hallie.
Here.
Vice Chair Kine.
Here.
And Commissioner Nichols.
Here.
And we have Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mobley that are absent today, and Commissioner Burke.
And did I get a second for approval of the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to open up oral comments from the public.
I don't have any Zoom participants at this time.
I move to close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our business at hand is the Planning Commission to review and provide comments on the Mill District Specific Plan Supplemental Environmental Impact Report and make a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the amendments to the general plan, the Mill District specific plan, including the Implementing Q, Qualified Zone, and Design Guidelines.
Good afternoon, Chair Hallie and esteemed Planning Commissioners, I'm Sheri Meads, I'm the Community Development Director. We're just going to wait till our fellow Commissioner joins.
Adding Commissioner Bennett.
So as you mentioned, we're here tonight, the item is the City of Fortuna Mill District Specific Plan, and I'm going to give a little bit of an overview, introductions, and then kick it off to our amazing consultant team. Tonight presenting will be myself, Sheri Meads, the Community Development Director, Brendan Byrd, our Director of Public Works, we have Vanessa Blodgett from Placeworks, and also John Miller, who is with Placeworks also. Oh God, I'm thinking my former jurisdiction, PW, I apologize, it's Plan West. So, the city efforts toward redeveloping the Mill District area date back to at least 2006, when the community recommended and the City Council determined that the former Pacific Lumber Company mill site should be redeveloped with a mix of land uses, as opposed to what was originally there, which was one land use. So through its general plan adoption process at the time, which is our current general plan, it was adopted in 2010, the city designated a Mill District focus area and general plan land use designation, which includes the former mill site and adjoining existing residential, commercial, and industrial uses. The area has been referred to as the Mill District ever since. And a former area plan was developed and went through a community outreach process and all of that back at that time, but it was not adopted with the general plan, so it is not, we do not have an adopted plan for this area. And in 2021, acknowledging that the vacant former mill site was becoming a community nuisance, you know, weeds and the unhoused staying there, a lot of trash being left, and fire hazards and that type of thing, the city initiated a Mill District Specific Plan project. The owner at that time was not successfully marketing or planning or improving that area, so the city took it upon ourselves to start a process of planning for that area. And then in 2023, the ownership of the former mill site part of the Mill District area was purchased by a developer who has been actively marketing the site as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. And you're going to hear more about some of this sprinkled throughout the process. So the Mill District, particularly the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, as envisioned in the specific plan, will transform the city's most underutilized area into an important hub for economic employment, tourism, and residential development. And so before I turn it over to the amazing consultant team from Plan West, I would like to acknowledge that, I don't know if any of you saw in the Lost Coast outpost, after I had done an interview with them and they printed an article about the Mill District Specific Plan, they threw out a poll to folks and said, what do you think should go there? And 1,454 people voted, and the top things that, the top voters, vote getters were Trader Joe's, followed closely with a tie between higher density affordable housing and a Home Depot, and I just want to say that all of those things would be allowed.
Oh.
With this plan. So, we have one person that is sharing the screen, so I'm going to ask if we could move to the next slide. And so I already did the specific plan background, this is just sort of an agenda slide to give you an idea of what's coming this afternoon. It's a relatively lengthy presentation, but this is a project that warrants, deserves and warrants the time. So we're going to talk about the general plan amendments that would be required to implement the Mill District Specific Plan, and there are a couple of other ones that are related. Talk about the organization of the plan itself, and give you some high level overview of it. What will be required for, to implement the plan, to move it forward for our community, and then of course, the ever-present environmental analysis requirement, which in this case was supplemental EIR, which, environmental impact report, which we'll explain a little bit later. And then we'll talk about what we're hoping to get from the commission tonight. Next slide, please. Here's a slide that just gives the approval process and timeline to show you that where we're at. Obviously, there's been a whole bunch of work that went into it before this, but the last time this project was brought before this commission was in January of this year, to provide you an update with where we were at. And then since that time, we have released the public review draft of the Mill District Specific Plan itself and the draft supplemental EIR. As you can see in the bold, we're here today, whoa, to talk about the land use element amendments and the Mill District Specific Plan. And I want to highlight the date of October 15th, 2024. This is when we need to have all of the written comments from anyone who has a comment on the environmental impact report. So even if you do comment tonight on that environmental impact report, we'll need you to provide those comments in written form, so we can make sure that they are incorporated into the EIR with formal responses from the city team. And then, as you can see, the ultimate goal is gosh darn it, we're going to get this thing adopted by the end of the year. So that's our goal there. Next slide is where we toss it over to our Plan West folks, thank you.
Turn that on, okay, great. Well, thank you for having us here, we're happy to be here, and I will launch right into it. And Sheri did go into a little bit of this, so I will be brief, but the Mill District focus area was designated in the 2010 general plan. A draft, admin draft plan at that time was prepared, was not adopted. And so we are moving forward with the Mill District Specific Plan in that focus area, which includes the old Palco lumber mill site and adjacent residents and commercial areas. So this slide shows the current land use and zoning designations, which are not consistent with each other. So the, there is a Mill District land use designation currently that we are proposing to amend slightly, and then we are updating the zoning as well to be consistent with the Mill District and the land uses and uses that we are proposing in that area, and the city wants to allow in that area. And so this process, at least the current process, started around 2021. The city did initiate the specific plan back then with a grant through the local early action planning grant from HCD that was supplemented by Headwaters Funding, and it has since, there have been some technical and special studies that have been supplemented by the property owner in the city as well. Throughout the process, we have done some public and stakeholder outreach, including with local tribes, property owners, Calfish and Wildlife, PG and E. So the city has done a bit of outreach to agencies and stakeholders. And a specific plan is, it's a regulated California planning document, so it's adopted by the local jurisdiction to implement a particular vision for a defined area. They're usually in areas marked for redevelopment and include guidelines, goals, policies, and implementation strategies to guide public and private investment in a coordinated manner. A specific plan must include certain items, including land use policies and maps related to the distribution, location, and extent of the land uses, development standards, the location and components of needed public and private infrastructure improvements, and implementing actions, including financing programs, to carry out the plan. A specific plan. Sorry. May not be.
Was it you?
Okay. A specific plan may not be adopted or amended unless it's consistent with the general plan. I am now going to hand it over to John, and he is going to get into the general plan changes and amendments that are being proposed.
So in order to implement the specific plan and the sort of the changes that the city has recognized or that are a part of the city's vision, new vision for the Mill District area, a series of changes need to occur to the general plan. First and foremost is a change to the Mill District land use designation, which is applied to most of the proposed specific plan area right now, and the changes to allow a full range of compatible industrial uses within the specific plan area. The city's recognized the need for industrial, variety of types of industrial spaces within the city. The site has been used for industrial purposes, and there is some soil contamination now that limits the uses unless remediation takes place to industrial uses, so it really makes sense to maintain a range of industrial uses there. Do you want me to just do it? I can just hit it, sorry. To allow development within the 100-year floodplain. There's a, there's a Mill District land use designation, which is, which is within the land use element where the other land use designations are, and then there's, there are Mill District focus area policies, which, which sort of define the city's vision for the Mill District area. Within, within the focus area, there's a policy that limit, that essentially prohibits development within the 100-year floodplain. 100-year floodplain is about 22 acres of the 100 or so area, acres of the specific plan, and as you can see from this slide, there, the 100-year floodplain covers variety of areas within the city. Many of those areas are developed with a range of uses. The general plan has policies to allow development within the 100-year floodplain, zoning regulations protect uses consistent with the general plan. So it's, it is, it's, it is common within this city and elsewhere within the state to allow development within the 100-year floodplain. So, and there are, it isn't necessarily the, I guess, the city's open space planning within the general plan didn't identify the 100-year floodplain as open space within the city, within, as you know, part of the 700-odd acres of open space within the city. There may be better areas within the city for public open space, and efficient development of the land within the Mill District will provide significant employment and economic benefits to the city. The, so other focus area changes are to facilitate the development of adjacent vacant residential areas and commercial areas, and to provide sort of broad planning for the Kenmar and Newburgh roundabouts, which both are adjacent to or overlap the Mill District area. There are other changes, which are to the land use map and to the industrial and commercial square foot caps, which are elsewhere within the land use element. The changes to the industrial and commercial caps are, they'll facilitate the full use of the Mill District area. The caps that are in the land use element, both within the industrial development policies and the commercial development policies, were intended to reduce the potential for blight within the region, not beyond, beyond Fortuna, within Eureka and other portions of the unincorporated area. As the caps were sort of a blunt instrument, identifying a certain amount of square footage that could occur within certain land use designations, with the intent that this, these, the square footage is related to projected growth at the time. And looking at those caps, they don't necessarily, they don't provide the flexibility for the city to allow development that the city needs. So the caps would be removed, and in place of the caps would be an annual monitoring program, where city staff would, as they do now, they would track square, the, track commercial and industrial development, they would track market conditions, vacancies, they would coordinate with large property owners, the Chamber of Commerce, and others on the conditions within the city, and report as part of the general plan annual report to the Planning Commission and the City Council to say, this is what's going on, these are, these are the conditions that we see, these are the changes from the past, and if, if changes to the general plan are required, they would recommend those to the Planning Commission, rather than just this, the focused caps within certain land use designations or certain areas. So this is, this, the, an analysis in the EIR suggests that this, the removal of the caps or the replacement with the monitoring isn't going to have an impact on what was then called blight and is now called urban decay in the SEQA process. So the, the next slide shows the organization of the specific plan. There's an introduction and vision, which, which are both, show the high-level objectives of the, that the city has for the plan. There is a chapter relating to land use, open space, and design. In it, there's a series of policies that are consistent with policies within the land use element that, that, that provide additional detail on what's, what is desired to occur within the Mill District area. The, that, actually, I neglected to, so the, talking about open space in particular, the, the, in exchange for allowing development within the 100-year floodplain, the Mill District focus area policies and the Mill District Specific Plan define buffer areas for Strong's and Mill Creek that are twice, that are twice otherwise allowed within the city. So 100-foot setbacks from the top of bank for Strong's Creek and 75-foot setbacks for Mill Creek. Within those areas, the, the, the Strong's Creek Trail would be located, and there could be other sort of passive recreation adjacent to the trails. That's also spelled out within the Mill District Specific Plan. And there's a series of policies relating to design, that relate to the design of buildings, the setbacks and buffers, the, the, these policies are consistent with the land use element and go beyond what would otherwise be allowed by the land use element. And an appendix to the specific plan are design guidelines to which all development within the specific plan would be subject. They would, projects would go before the Planning Commission as they do now. The Planning Commission would determine if the proposed development is consistent with the design guidelines. There's a chapter relating to circulation, infrastructure, and community services. Actually, I probably, okay, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the wrong, to the wrong slide. So this, this first slide shows the conceptual layout that the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, the largest landowner has, suggests, it represents a conceptual layout for their, for their development. The conceptual layout is about 750,000 square feet of new development, and that, plus the existing development and potential development that could occur within other vacant areas of the specific plan area, was used in the environmental analysis. It's, for the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, it's primarily a range of transportation-related uses, a range of industrial uses and commercial uses, both in the north and the south side. The proposed uses in the south side are more freeway-oriented, commercial development, hotel, automobile-related sales. And that's, that, the image on the right-hand side, which shows the sub-areas of the plan, also shows the same building footprints. So the, this is, this is, these are the suite of policies that I was previously describing, diverse range of industrial uses, development cited and designed to be compatible with adjacent uses, and the design guidelines are the tool to ensure that. Protection of Strong's and Mill Creek riparian areas, the buffers, performance standards, and guidelines to ensure environmental and, and high-quality building design. Complete streets that accommodate people, people walking, on bikes, as large trucks as well, which, which the city hopes will be present to ensure the success of the project, and infrastructure and street improvements timed with development. These slides are the design slides, and Sheri's going to describe those.
Thank you so much, John, from Plan West. As John mentioned, the goal of the design guidelines is to ensure that the site is functional, aesthetically pleasing, just all of the things that you would want to see in a, in a spot this important and integral to the city's development. So there, in this focus area, there are going to be a diverse range of uses, we hope. And so in order to accommodate that, there are specific aesthetic requirements, buffering requirements, site layout shoulds, parking lot and frontage design, all of this is in the design guidelines. I'm not going to go into it in too much depth, this just gives a little bit of a high-level thing of what we're looking at. I mean, I'm sure all of us have seen those big, long stretches of a, of a building that is just blank. There's just no character to it, there's nothing attractive about it. And so what we're trying to do here is avoid those, at least from the public-facing areas, so that it's attractive, an attractive streetscape, functional, people are going to walk and use multimodal transportation, as well as those big trucks and cars that are inevitably going to be part of it, as John mentioned. So it, it, it talks about how to accomplish those things, and there's many options. There's a whole suite of ways that somebody can dress up a building, if you will. Windows, adding changes in color, textures, that type of thing. And so because of this area being so important and integral, we've, we've included a, you know, a little bit more of a, of a palette to work from, but it's still incredibly flexible. So it, it's looking at things like, if we're going to have residential next to industrial, how do we make those compatible, because we want both, right? So is there a way to buffer, is there a way to move the noise generating activities as far away from possible as that adjacent use? And that's what the design guidelines look toward, and trying to keep everything somewhat cohesive. If you're going to have five buildings on your parcel, kind of design it so that they go together, you know? It doesn't mean they have to match, doesn't mean they have to be sisters. No, it doesn't mean they have to be twins, they just should be sisters. In other words, they should go together. So next slide, please. Oh, you already did. Again, same things, you know, if there're going to be a lot of parking lots here, let's minimize them as much as possible, and ensure that there's adequate and safe pedestrian walkways between buildings to transit stops. Increasing, we just really want to increase the safety and comfort for everyone that's going to be using this really, really exciting area. And that's really, I mean, I can answer many more detailed questions about design guidelines if you want to hear more about it, but that's just a high-level overview of what we're trying to do. And I think I'm passing it on to Brendan now.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. So I will be talking about infrastructure planning, which is one of the more interesting, challenging, but also one of the most important things that we have going on with the mill site. And honestly, it's probably one of the biggest thing that has kept the mill site from developing or redeveloping in the past. So I'll start, I'll speak to each one briefly. By all means, if any questions or, or comments come up, I'm happy to answer those, they do. And I'll start with water. Water, of course, is one of the most important things we all have, and it's interesting because even in the former use as a mill, water was very important for firefighting, for mill operations, for all sorts of things they had going. As such, the historic setting out there is that there are a lot of water lines, they're located in areas that were convenient for the use as a mill at that time. And because the city really kind of grew up around the mill, the water infrastructure out there is uniquely tied together with our surrounding neighborhoods, our mains on the Boulevard, our mains on Newburgh Road, our mains that run under the freeway. But because of that, we also have a network of somewhat aging or unknown infrastructure out there. We have a lot of water lines in areas that are not ideal for a new development plan, and certainly one that would have more intensity and more buildings, like we're talking about now, as opposed to its use as a mill in the past. So as it comes to water, what our vision is, is that we would install, our new main lines would be installed with current sizing and construction materials and in today's design standards, and that would be located in the network of roads located along the site. And that's what you'll see is shown in kind of this greenish color on the figure you see on the left, is a new water main that would go within that road and tie together our existing key infrastructure points, which include our water main that goes under Highway 101, our water main connection at Newburgh Road, our water main connection at South Fortuna Boulevard in Kenmar, and lastly, our water main connection that we have that runs the old Pacific Lumber Fire Line that runs around some parcels currently owned by Went Construction. So with that, we believe we can maintain a robust water delivery system in the mill site area that would be more than adequate for any, you know, uses that would be involved in that development. We did look back at the water supply assessment that was part of the 2010 general plan. So of course, when you do big planning documents like this from an infrastructure's perspective, you want to make sure that, you know, you have enough capacity to deal with things long into the future. And so with what was done in the 2010 general plan, and in our more recent urban water management plans that we're required to do every five years through the Department of Water Resources, we have found that what was previously analyzed and planned for as far as long-term water demand at the mill site is consistent under this new development scenario as with what was previously analyzed. So long story short, what is being proposed tonight, talking about expansion of development in the floodplain areas, expansion of development square footage in the upper areas, is not anticipated to result in an area where all of a sudden we don't have enough supply, whether that's our wellfields down on the Old Drive, or storage capacity up in any of our reservoirs. So that should be good. We did do analysis for fire supply delivery and found that for most uses, the fire flow deliveries are going to be adequate. There are some uses that may have such a uniquely high fire demand that that may require some special infrastructure that would be on the development. some special infrastructure that would be on the developer, whether that's some additional storage, some additional booster pumps, some things of that nature. But outside of that, everything with water fortunately is pretty straightforward. Moving over to sewer, interesting for us, a large site that has quite a bit of history with water, I don't think there's one sewer connection out there. So everything that would be installed as part of this new development would go in brand-new, and it would be located again in new access roadways, whether those are public roadways or private roadways. And those would serve all the new different developments that front along those roads. We did look at some preliminary layouts for how the site could ultimately be sewed, i.e. collect the sewer from the site and deliver it to the city's wastewater treatment plant. The big finding is that for a lot of the site, it looks like at face value, some small lift stations would be required in order to locally collect it in a gravity system and ultimately pump it to our wastewater treatment plant, which is on Dinsmore Drive. In the southern area, this could be accomplished by tying into an existing line that we have out of our Strong's Creek Lift Station. In the northern area, this would be accomplished by tapping into our gravity system that we have up there. I will note sewer's really tricky because it's very much based on grades and slopes and utility conflicts, so there's only so much planning you can do at this point. There are other opportunities. Any future development would have to dig deeper into the engineering of it to see what will work, what won't work, and if there's any other opportunities outside of the design as being shown here. I will note that any new lift stations, anything like that that would go in, it is the city's practice and general practice too, for special infrastructure like that that serves a development, be it residential or commercial, would be subject to an assessment benefit. The city would operate it, and the parcels benefiting from that, you know, specific infrastructure would be funding the operation, maintenance, and replacement of those, those facilities, specifically lift stations. Yes, next slide. Yeah, thank you. And then the next two, transportation and drainage. I'll start with drainage, only because it's more straightforward, and then we can end with transportation. So the mill site is very large, and it's interesting, we usually think about development as, you know, you've got this big green area that you're going to turn into various hardscapes, and there's going to be impacts associated with that. The mill site's interesting because about 60 or 65% of the site is either impervious or certainly hard-packed gravel at this point. So there's not as many general impacts to drainage and stormwater flow generation, peak flow increasing, as you would normally envision with a site of this scale, which is a good thing, right? It's been developed, it's, there's infrastructure out there. We have city infrastructure that conveys that amount of water right now. Not to say there aren't improvements that would be required, but it's not like 100 acres of green area that's turning into 100 acres of pavement. So that's one area. There are not a lot of off-site improvements that we project being required in the drainage area, largely because the city's policy and really where development in, in the entirety of the state is moving towards is that drainage management is largely on individual development projects as it is. So through the state's MS4 permit to which the city is a participant, individual development projects deal with their drainage on-site. They have things like we've recently installed on 12th Street, rain gardens, other things to manage peak flow runoff. They install those, they maintain those into perpetuity. And this project would have, any development in the mill district's specific plan area would have all these types of measures and mechanism to deal with that drainage. The two areas of note that I will throw out there is there are some existing neighborhoods we have off of Spring Street, South 15th and South 16th, that naturally grade to the former mill site, and there is drainage infrastructure on the mill to accommodate that. You'll see it is a policy objective in the plan that those drainage pathways would be maintained, and that even any infrastructure developed on the mill site itself would be able to accommodate that now and into the future, even under a development scenario. And if that was the case, buyback agreements or anything else could be drafted in order for the initial developer to recoup cost on being required to make something larger to plan for future development. And that ends us with transportation and circulation, which of course is probably the biggest challenge we're facing in the site has, has faced historically in all of the visions it's ever had for redevelopment. And I'll start on three levels, and the first one is kind of the internal network. So what you'll see on the left, there's a, a new road envisioned, we'll just call it New Road. Right now, if you look on Google, I think it calls it Eel River Road, maybe, informally. The main alignment that we are looking at in the concept plan at this point would have a new intersection at Newburgh and Sunnybrook. The road would come to the south, and it would follow generally the alignment of the former rail, railroad there, before taking a right, or a turn to the east, I should say, and coming out onto South Fortuna Boulevard, near McDonald's and, and Hot Brew there. So this would be the main road. It would have the facilities, you know, to bring folks in and out, bring trucks in and out. It would have infrastructure, you know, sidewalk and a separated pathway, so bike users could get in there too. It would have connections to the future Great Redwood Trail, which of course is the goal for the former railroad right-of-way. So users from, you know, the, the surrounding residential neighborhoods could use this road as a pathway ultimately to get to the Great Redwood Trail. Users of the Great Redwood Trail could use those connections to come into this area if there was, you know, various uses in the, in the commercial or mixed-use areas that were more tourist or, or customer-serving. So that would be the main road there. A few other areas that aren't necessarily called out on this figure, but are shown in the, in the draft plan as it is now, is we do also envision a future connection to Pond Street. So Pond Street is currently located just off of the northbound off-ramp. It's that interesting little driveway near the stop sign where Sequoia Gas, I guess, Blue Star Gas currently operates some things. And what we are finding there, and especially in the context of our future interchange projects, is being able to reorient some of their traffic onto a future road through the mill site is of, is of pretty high importance in being able to make the interchange roundabout project itself happen. So we're hoping that that will be an improvement that could link up with this road really nicely. There's also, there's also in the document, one of our, our visions is to have a separate-side private-access road that makes sure some existing parcels located on the eastern side, kind of down by the Hot Brew area, can be served as well, and that that can be co-located with some potential utility easements, and also maintain emergency access into the Third Street neighborhood. One area that we have been working with the Fire Protection District on is identifying what pathways we need to maintain for emergency response, and the back of Third Street is one of the priority areas that our fire district is most concerned about. And a, and a shared access way through that particular area would accomplish that goal. Lastly, we don't, and there is not a current vision to have a through road that would go from Newburgh to Kenmar. It, it's been discussed in the past, but it's not something we're necessarily interested in seeing at this point, as the site is kind of set up into two main access points as it is. And with that, all that would be maintained across the creek there is emergency secondary access via the existing bridge or retrofitted bridge. And again, just for the intensity of the use, it provides emergency vehicles a secondary way to get in and out of those lower portions of the site. So those are the, let's call them the new internal transportation components. Next are where they connect to existing city streets. That's at Newburgh, South Fortuna Boulevard, and Kenmar. So in each one of these areas, significant improvements would be required ultimately to, I'll say, plumb them into our network. Those would largely, as they are implemented through time, be dependent on the types of building permits, the types of developments, how much any happened at one given time. Of course, the specific plan looks at them from a build-out scenario. And so what we found is when this site fully develops, at the Kenmar, not the Kenmar, at the Newburgh, the intersection of this road with Newburgh, some sort of intersection control would be required there, be it a signal or a roundabout. Both would work, both would have to be developed in order to determine, you know, where they go, how big they need to be, and things like that. But long-term, if the site were to develop, that is a required improvement that would need to be there. Similarly, as that same main access road comes out on the South Fortuna Boulevard, the finding there is that pretty much needs to be another signalized intersection, similar to any of the ones we have going up and down the Boulevard, be it Newburgh, or Ross Hill Road, or Redwood Way just up the way. Going down to the south, there are some reconfigurations that would likely be required to for the lower portion of the mill site at Kenmar. That is an area that will need, you know, some further investigation, again, depending on the types of uses, the types of traffic generation that a developer was proposing. And as a side note, one thing we are looking at doing right now as we kick off our final engineering design phase of our Kenmar interchange improvement project is to see if there's an opportunity long-term to incorporate access to the site via the future roundabouts in order to kind of achieve that goal. Lastly, I'll speak to the roundabouts themselves a little bit, or more generally, what I would call off-site impacts. So of course, there's the impacts where the new infrastructure meets our existing infrastructure, but then those users, whether they're coming or going, continue to propagate again in and out from the site further, and they go through additional interchanges throughout the city. And we did find as part of some preliminary analysis that a few of the city's intersections, Newburgh and South Fortuna Boulevard, and Newburgh and Ross Hill Road, would have some impacts based on build-out development here. And with that, there is a proportional share of impact, you know, that is found as a result of the project. We don't have projects in those two areas that would address those at current. We just know that it would bring us slightly over the threshold of acceptability in the current general plan target, which is to maintain a level of service C or greater. And then lastly, the interchanges at Kenmar and at 12th Street. So these are two projects the city has been pushing forward for about the last 10 years, partnering with Caltrans on that. I will note that the city's approach to the design and hopefully the construction at some point, if we get funding, of these interchanges would be to include traffic volumes for build-out of the site in addition to build-out of the city. But those are two areas that would have impacts, of course, associated with this project. And, and we've been talking to the property owner about those things and thinking about, you know, how, how we would be able to move forward with that. Because one of the more interesting things outside of the plan and the, and the long-term goal of the site is, is, you know, how, how do you start to bring projects online until you have some of these improvements completed? And that's a little outside of the scope of what you'll see presented in the specific plan. It is something that staff is acutely aware of, of course, and those would be considered and developed as, as part of development agreements and other things as projects were proposed after the specific plan goes through. So with that, that is everything on infrastructure. I'll hand it back to Vanessa and John.
So implementation is key to the success of the specific plan, to both, to reduce uncertainty to the property owners and to the city, and to facilitate the appropriate development that's called out in the general plan and, and highlighted in the specific plan. And that's sort of why a specific plan was chosen, rather than the area plan, which was originally envisioned in the general plan. Area plans are, are slightly more detailed, but they're a part of the general plan. A specific plan is separate from the general plan. It, it's adopted like a general plan, but it's not limited in terms of how many times you can amend it in a year, like a general plan. Specific plan serves as a bridge between the general plan and the zoning, and the specific plan will contain a series of performance measures, in particular relating to infrastructure, the utilities, public services, noise, biological resources, hazardous materials, and drainage. And the, the specific plan is paired with a new Q-qualified zone, which serves as the performance measures for the land use. And the specific plan also includes the, the, the design guidelines. So all development will, that's proposed within the specific plan area will be compared to the specific plan, mostly through the zoning regulations to, to ensure conformity with the general plan. The infrastructure financing is another element of the specific plan. There'll be performance measures, the, the, and they contain sort of goals relating to ensuring that the proportionate share of costs is allocated to all users. And that's, I think that's the end of the specific plan discussion.
All right, now we get into CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, process and timeline. So I'm going to start kind of process and timeline, and then dig a little bit into what's in the supplemental EIR that was prepared. So what was prepared was a draft supplemental EIR, and it tears off of the general plan EIR, and it is available for review on the city's website. Comments are due specifically on the EIR by October 15th, and we do need to have comments on the EIR provided in writing, either email or a letter to mail or dropped off at the city. And then, once we receive comments, we will respond to written comments and prepare the final EIR, and make any revisions to, necessary to the draft EIR. And then that draft and final EIR is what the city council will ultimately be asked to certify and adopt when they are brought the specific plan itself. And so now, a little bit about what is the supplemental EIR is, and what's in there, is, as I said, the general plan EIR was adopted and certified in 2010, and it's kind of the first-tier CEQA document, and it's a programmatic-level policy, looking at policy. And additional projects that come in underneath that, such as the specific plan, that are consistent with that, can use the analysis in that and build on it, and see if there's any additional significant impacts based on what's being proposed. So that's what has been done for, for the mill district's specific plan itself. We went through all the issue areas that are evaluated in CEQA, everything from aesthetics to biological resources to greenhouse gas, and did analyze and review what's in the current general plan EIR, and in there, it explains what, why it's consistent with that, or why it's not. And so there are a few topic areas where, that weren't part of CEQA in 2010. So that includes vehicles miles, vehicle miles traveled, so VMT. We did a VMT analysis that we'll get into in a minute. And then also tribal cultural resources is a new CEQA topic, and there's new mitigation measures that are based on a cultural resources report that was done for the project itself that are incorporated into the supplemental EIR. And then some of these other topics, land use, parks and rec, public health and safety, those are analyzed within the supplemental EIR itself. And now I think we are going to talk a little bit about VMT, and we have Todd from GHD on Zoom, so hopefully he can be able to jump in, just because this is a newer CEQA topic, and they did quite a bit of technical analysis too, to come to the conclusions. So Todd, I don't know if you can...
Thanks, Vanessa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. So, yeah, I'm, I know we have a lot to cover, so I'll try to be brief, and I'll certainly be present if you have any questions at the end. But Senate Bill 743, SB 743, was passed in 2013, and it took the better part of 10 years for that to really go into full effect. But what, what it does is essentially eliminates level of service as the performance standard for transportation impacts under CEQA. So the old way, like, for example, your general plan was evaluated was based on how projects affected the capacity and the throughput of vehicles at intersections and roadways and interchanges. And now instead, we are tasked with looking at how projects either create more VMT, so more vehicle miles traveled, either more trips or longer trips, whether they decrease them, with the goal of ultimately decreasing per capita vehicle miles traveled. So the number or length of trips taken by employees and by residents of, of a community. So some advisory guidance has been issued from OPR, as well as Caltrans, and the county, Humboldt County, has looked at VMT in the past. It's been a regional performance measure for a long time as part of regional transportation plans, as well as climate action plans and other efforts, but not analyzed in quite the same way as it has been suggested and recommended for CEQA for transportation impact purposes. And when we initiated this study, one thing we immediately looked for is whether a regional threshold, whether a local threshold has been adopted, or a regional threshold that we can, we can tear off... we can tear off of, and one was not present in Humboldt County or in the city of Fortuna. Next slide, please. So how do we measure VMT, and how did we measure it here? The key kind of critical inputs to vehicle miles traveled is actually not trips necessarily, it's stuff. It's where do the people live, where are the households, where are the jobs, where are the non-retail jobs, where are people shopping, where are they going to work, where are they commuting? And what we did is we incorporated a methodology that we had used previously for the city of Arcata's general plan update and for the Gateway Area specific plan up there that was ultimately adopted and we found quite appropriate for the Humboldt County region, especially in light of the fact that your regional travel demand model, in its current iteration, struggles a bit with producing VMT results. And so we developed essentially an off-model methodology that measures the same things. And some of the different metrics that we look at is how diverse is your land use. So what is the mix of jobs and housing in the city? What is the mix of retail jobs and non-retail jobs? How often can people basically, within their walkable radius, get to different destinations that may indicate that they would supplement some of their driving trips with walking trips? And this was all kind of validated against regional data that we had access to. And so what we found is that, as a region, when jobs and houses and retail opportunities are proximate, when they're within a half-mile kind of a walkable radius, people do reduce the number of trips they take. So people do walk to those destinations, not for all their trips, but for enough to make a difference. So we also looked at how much stuff essentially is within that walkable radius, the density score. And then there's a destination score that's basically based on, as far as a regional destination, how many trips are you attracting in from the other greater Humboldt County region? We aggregate all of this in scores by hexagon and then by a citywide score. And again, the goal per OPR guidance and kind of reiterated through trickle-down guidance from Caltrans and others is to reduce, what we want to look at is whether your plan reduces your city local average. Does it reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled relative to the regional average? So are you improving the region's overall vehicle miles traveled score or the amount of trips being undertaken, or are you making it worse? Next slide, please. So where an ideal score is 100, what we found, and this is ideal, and this is all more explained in our appendix memorandum, the ideal score is essentially one where an area fully satisfies the ability to walk between these different trip generators is 100. What we found is your countywide average score is 74.3. Okay? And then meanwhile, the city's existing score was slightly above that. Okay? So Fortuna generates slightly more VMT than the regional average. And that's really because of Eureka and Arcata as well, which really bring down the regional score. If those cities were not in the county, then Fortuna would clearly be amongst the lower VMT areas in the county, because there's just more stuff there. In any case, we ran the analysis with and without the project, which is what CEQA asks us to do. And what we found is that the project does improve the condition. So the project as proposed would reduce VMT. It would provide more jobs. Currently, Fortuna is, for lack of a better term, under job. You have more households and you have jobs accessible. This would add a lot more jobs. It would also add some new households. However, what we found is that if you think of this balance between the two, the proposed plan actually adds slightly more jobs and fewer households. And so we tip into the other direction with this plan. And so the score does improve, but it doesn't improve sufficiently to get you below the threshold that was established. And so we do recommend and find that the impact is found significant and unavoidable despite the fact that it does improve over the base condition. It doesn't quite get to the standard which we set for the city, which is based on, again, guidance from the state.
Thanks, Todd.
Next slide.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, after that excitement, I am going to take the last few slides to take us over the finish line. So as I mentioned earlier before we started the presentation, your role tonight as planning commission is to provide a forum for public review and comment. Consider the documents that you received as part of your packet, including considering the CEQA document. Consider findings of general plan consistency and recommending approval to city council, which is the next step of the Mill District specific plan documents, the amendments to the general plan policy and land use diagrams, and the zoning regulations and map. So with that, the Community Development Department, the Engineering Department, the City Manager, Plan West, everybody here recommends that the planning commission provide a motion to adopt Resolution Number P-2024-3118, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna recommending the city council adopt amendments to the general plan land use element and adopt the Mill District specific plan, including the implementing Q-qualified zone and design guidelines. Next slide, please. So I have to apologize, on this list of our deep bench, I forgot to put Todd, because I was trying to remember how to spell his name and didn't get back to it in time before it slipped out of the brain. So we do have Todd, who is on the call. We have Amy, our city, Amy Nelson, our interim city manager, myself, Brendan, Vanessa, and John from Plan West, who are here to answer any questions you may have or just take your feedback in general. And again, thanks, everyone, for being here and for your time.
Okay, well, I want to apologize. I failed to mention before our great presentation that this hearing is only the first step in the adoption process. The public will have additional opportunities to weigh in on the project, the next being the city council meeting at 3:00 PM on Monday, October 21st. And with that, I will ask my fellow commissioners for any comments, questions, concerns they
I have one. You gave me a lot of information, and it's great, but I did, Spring Street kind of rang out to me. Is that going to be a dead end, or is it going to be a thorough fair?
So the approach that we're taking, and it's an interesting question, initially, as we looked at development of the site, a goal for us was to tie some more of those residential roads into the area. There are a number of them, South 15th, South 16th, First, Second, and Third Avenue, which are all located off of Spring Street. We found two things. One, those existing streets are too narrow. You know, by the time users are parked there and everybody's going through, actually developing those streets, connecting them with new ones in the Mill site, and ultimately allowing for or encouraging throughput of vehicles would likely have a pretty negative impact on the residential neighborhoods there. So ultimately, you know, we don't envision having most of those streets having any connectivity at all. With that being said, too, over in the Mill site itself, as you start connecting a lot of those streets, you know, it's a relatively small grid, and it just keeps taking away more and more of what otherwise is highly usable space. The one area, like I mentioned, in regards to the access road that we talked about to preserve access to some existing parcels, is we do want to maintain emergency-only access to the back of Third Avenue, which is connected to Spring Street. That is one of those little stubbed area streets. It actually has a gate on it right now, and it has quite a number of homes there. So because of that, and its narrow nature and how long it is, maintaining just secondary access only. So again, it'd be gated. It wouldn't have, you know, vehicles going either way. It'd just be there for emergency purposes.
I figured. Thank you so much. That's a great answer.
I wanted to check with Sheri, did a notification go out to the neighbors within the 300 or 600-foot buffer, whether it was Spring Street or the ones along South Fortuna Boulevard, Newburgh Road, Pond?
Yes. And, you know, I did forget to add, and I should introduce, that Katie, our wonderful planning commissioner secretary, has been involved in this project from day one also. So she's here to answer any questions that I can't. But she did send notification to all property owners and residents within 300...
Approximately 160.
160 people received notification.
Pretty healthy notification.
And did you get any comment back from any of them?
No. And it was in the newspaper, too, and on social media and on the city website. We're really trying to get the word out there, because we do want to hear from people, rather than after the fact saying, "I didn't know what was happening." That's my worst.
We do have some neighboring property owners in the gallery today.
Yeah, I do recognize a couple people.
Great.
Any other questions? Yes?
Is the public going to have access to the Creek, Rick area and areas and the trails from inside this project? Are there going to be any available parking for people to come into the area and then access the trails?
Right now, there isn't any specific parking that would be planned to have that. There are a few trails, you know, that we envision long-term being there. One, the Great Redwood Trail, which is a little bit more, you know, on the state assembly side, as far as where that project is being developed. The city does have the Strong's Creek Trail, which we would love to see, which would include a trail that goes up the west bank of Mill Creek, so it's kind of in the lower section there. And one of the things we're looking at doing as part of our interchange project is kind of updating and expanding the use of the park-and-ride facility there, which is a logical kind of also trailhead location for both the Great Redwood Trail or the Strong's Creek Trail. There would otherwise be connections that would take you in and out of the ability to get in the trails within the project site. But right now, there's no designated area for parking or things like that. And to take it one step further, in the road itself, the main access roads, you know, we see those in the current concept design as having no parking, you know, just to discourage, you know, heavy use of people just going and storing and doing other things in kind of an industrialized area. So the short answer is, you know, we don't have anything necessarily called out there specifically in the plan.
It may be too early for this, but I was curious about requirements for green energy, solar in particular, on the rooftops of these buildings that we're proposing. Do we have any information on energy requirements and how much energy we might be able to save by having rooftop solar?
I think that would be a question we would have to defer to our building official on what the current code is for the types of projects being completed. I could pass it over to John and Vanessa, but I don't believe there's any specific targets in there, unless I'm wrong. Sheri?
I was just going to say, there aren't any specific targets. The development would have to meet Title 24 requirements, and we do have our building official in the gallery here who could come up to the podium and provide a little more information on that. And obviously, we would encourage solar, and we do have streamlining processing of those applications. However, it has not historically been the direction that the city has given to require. However, that is something that you could provide in your feedback that we could take to city council. So this is Gary Goat, our planning official.
Right now, the only feedback we have is residential. I could never...
We had this problem at the last city council meeting, so we're just going to move the microphone over here and let you use this one. Sorry about that.
All right. Well, I'm already over here. So right now, residential does have that requirement.
Yes.
Commercial, they are working on it. We are going that way. So even if within solar and so on, on these commercial buildings, so they're talking about it and everything else, even if we get going, the farther, you know, time we get into this, that requirement will be, it'll be here. It would shock me that most of these buildings out here aren't going to be covered with solar mandated by the state, and most people are enjoying that portion of it, so...
I just know that, have the industrial and the energy...
Oh, yeah. A lot of these buildings are...
...have the infrastructure.
Yeah, a lot of these buildings are going to have a lot of flat. So those are ideal for these kind of setups. So, all right. You're welcome.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions?
I just have more comment on the design guidelines and parking lots. I guess I'd recommend, instead of just like a consistent hardscape, maybe have a landscape island or something at the ends of the parking spaces, or little landscape fingers sticking out every six spaces or whatever it may be. Just recommend incorporating some greenery into the hardscapes.
So there is a policy at this time to require trees every eight spaces in at least a four-by-four well and to provide front edge landscaping. Would you like to see that expanded? I'd be happy to take that recommendation to council.
More landscaping the better, I feel, but I don't...
I agree with you.
That's just an observation, a comment.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, I believe I could open up to public comment. I want to remind people to please address your questions and comments to the commissioners here and not to the staff, and we'll redirect as necessary. Commissioners are to make a note of comments and questions. They will want staff to address when the public comment period ends. With that, I open up public comment.
So appears we have technical difficulties at the podium, so we're going to have everyone come cozy up close to us. Thank you.
Hi, Sue Long from Wenton Construction. A little piece of the property down there. I would just say, in reference to your landscaping, keep in mind that this is industrial. Keep in mind that it's going to have a lot of truck traffic, so the more obstacles that you place in parking lots are going to make it that much more difficult for trucks to get around. So that's one of the things that, even though it looks nice, it may end up being more of an obstacle than it is helpful. So as you're looking at plans as they come in, keep that in mind. Also, landscaping is beautiful when it first goes in, but there's no teeth in the city so far to maintain that. And so city requires it, people do it, you get it in, five years later, it's dead, it's ugly. So just be careful what you ask for.
I appreciate being noticed. So owner of Clendenin Sideworks. A technical suggestion, which I made here, I've been to meetings where the mapping was on a large screen, so you could actually see it. And I think a lot of, this will come down to details, so if that could be available, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just a local resident. I live across the street from Mill. And I just wanted to make a comment that a lot of what I see going on in the world typically turns new developments into economic spaces that I don't really feel inviting in the architecture or in the activities that people would be doing. And I know that there's consideration for the aesthetic of the buildings, and I can appreciate that. I'm enthusiastic to see how this is going to turn out, because I live in proximity. But I would hope that there would also be smaller buildings or smaller businesses that would allow hobby groups or more social groups, so that it's not full of a large warehouse-like shopping areas where you buy your things and you leave. And my perspective is that typically, when there's more of a media or social presence within... within an area, it typically complements commercial instead of hindering it. So I'm hoping that this would be accommodating to something like that, something more social, more media, that people can enjoy being around instead of purchasing things and leaving.
Hello. My name is Raylena Crickston. I just wanted to express my support for this overall concept and plan. I think it's a great development idea, and like another speaker said, a lot of things come down to the details, but overarching, I think this is very well thought out, and it's the kind of revitalization that our county and this town could really benefit from. Thank you.
This is Shannon McQuarter. Our family owns the property on Pond Street, and we've been working with Brendan and the prior city manager primarily on the roundabout up there at 12th and Newburgh. And, you know, we've, you know, the problems come out in the details and we're in support of this project, and we want to see it go forward and just, you know, the city needs to be diligent, and the community needs to get involved in this thing and, you know, see it through. So, thank you.
Anyone else? So are there any questions that my commissioners wrote down that need to be addressed by the staff?
I agree about the roundabouts and what I've heard so far--
What I've heard so far about the roundabouts is that, well, we'll look at that in the future when we talk to Caltrans. And I'm of a mind that without those roundabouts, this is going to be a hellacious traffic problem. And I would much rather see the roundabouts being moved forward and the work getting done on that than pushing this through. Not that I'm against this project at all, but my fear is that we're going to see this development happen, and we're going to be kicking this can down the road as far as the roundabouts go, and everybody that lives at either end of this project is going to be impacted greatly by the traffic. That's it.
Commissioner Bennett, may I address that question or statement? So one of the things that happened in August at a city council meeting is I took an item to the council, asking the council to give me permission, so to speak, to explore an enhanced infrastructure finance district, and we call that an EFAID. And what an EFAID is, is you take property tax growth from a base year, and that property tax growth can finance infrastructure projects such as the roundabouts at Kenmar and 12th Street. And so that is a project that we're currently working on. I've received proposals from consultants to explore the EFAID because there's quite a process to establishing an EFAID. It's basically its own special district. And I also just want to say it's not a tax. It's not a new tax. You're taking property tax growth to finance public infrastructure projects. And we have to do a lot of public noticing. It's quite a process. And we also have to determine if enough property tax growth can be generated to actually finance the infrastructure projects. But we're hopeful, and I've had conversations with multiple consultants, and likely we'll take an item to the city council October 21st, asking for a supplemental budget request to hire the consultant to actually begin the development of the enhanced, the EFAID or the finance district.
And I would assume that since these roundabouts would greatly benefit the developers of this property, allowing their employees and their service people and deliveries in and out of the city, that they would be shouldering their fair share of the costs of these new improvements?
You know, there'll be conversations with the developer on development agreements and their contributions in the future.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to expand on that a little bit, you know, the super specifics of some, an item like that aren't necessarily worked out in a plan like this. And just to provide, you know, the whole commission with some reassurance, too, we on the staff level feel very much the same, right? We're acutely aware of the balance between the need for the infrastructure improvements, but also the need to start doing things that revitalize the area and revitalize the community. So we're pushing as hard as we can, you know, we're funded through our design phase for Kenmar, we're funded in our environmental phase for 12th Street currently. You know, we continue to push for meetings and other avenues to try and get additional state funding or things of that line to move these projects forward because in a perfect world, you know, we're pushing these and they're kind of the leading edge of the whole thing. So that's our approach, you know, and there's going to be some decision points as certain projects come along. If these have not been completed, you know, what types of projects could come forward, what types of impacts, you know, would be fine in an incremental approach. Those types of things get worked out outside of the specific plan setting and are more individual permit-based or development-based through development agreements and things of that nature. So more to come in any one of those areas.
Okay. Well, I think I need to close public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. So then we're going to ask for a motion to adopt resolution P-2024-3118 and read by title only, which we were read. Do we read it again?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
I'm sorry. You did read the motion.
I did.
Okay. So--
I'll second.
Roll call.
For resolution number P-2024-3118, a resolution of the Prime Minister and the Museum of the City Council recommending the city council adopt amendments to the general plan and land use element and the general plan specific plan, including implementing the people and design guidelines. Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Chair Hallow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dorr?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's great. I just want to remind folks that there will be at least two more opportunities to provide statements on the project, the first of which is a city council meeting on Monday, October 21st at 3:00 PM. And I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in-- Roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.